Thank you so much. Okay, we're gonna get going here. Good evening and welcome to the July 28th, 2025, meeting of the Town of Barnstable Planning Board here at Barnstable Town Hall, 367 Main Street, Hyannis, Mass. Where the James H. Crocker Jr. Hearing Room located on the second floor is currently 7:03 PM. The meeting notice was previously filed with the town clerk. Application materials may be accessed through the Planning Board website at townofbarnstable.us/boardscommittee/planningboard, or by contacting Karen Pina at karen.pina@town.barnstable.us, or by calling 508-862-4064. Notice of recording, the meeting will be televised live via Xfinity Channel 8 or High Definition Channel 1072. It may also be accessed via the Government Access Channel livestream on the Town of Barnstable's website, which is streaming 85.townofbarnstable.us/cablecastpublicsite. I'll now inquire whether anyone else is taping this meeting, and if so, please make your presence known. Seeing none, we will call the meeting to order this evening and introduce our board members and staff, starting with Matt.
Matt Teague, good evening.
Michael.
Good evening, Michael Mancinas.
Mary.
Mary Barry.
Ray.
Good evening, Ray Sexton.
Tim.
Good evening, Tim O'Neill.
Kyle.
Kyle Pettisini with the Planning Department.
Jim.
Good evening, Jim Cooper, Planning Director, Planning Department.
And Karen.
Karen Pina, Planning and Development Admin Assistant.
Thank you, and my name is Steve Robichaud. Welcome. We'll start with general public comment this evening. This is for public comment not related to any of the items on this evening's agenda. Seeing none, we will move along to this evening's first item, which is a subdivision. Tim, would you mind reading this item in?
No problem. Bill Egan has submitted an as-built plans and a request for Form M Certificate of Compliance for Subdivision Number 827. This is not a public hearing, does not need to be voted open or closed.
Excellent, thank you very much. Let's see, so, the board is in receipt of a staff report dated July 7th, 2025, related to subdivision 827. This afternoon, we received a notice of memorandum from the Town of Barnstable Department of Public Works from Matthew J. Robell. And Jim, if you don't mind, could you give us an overview of this item, the staff report, the memo from DPW, and then we will hear from the applicant.
Absolutely. So, as you mentioned, in your package, you have a staff report from the Department, Planning and Development, as well as a subsequent letter from DPW. The staff report indicates that there were some outstanding items. We have been following up with DPW. They provided us this update after field inspections. And you'll note, there are a handful of bulleted items that are still remaining. However, I will say, in discussions with our engineering department, many of them are minor, good to call out, good for the developer to complete. Things like, you know, filling in certain areas for grass that may not have fully established, or needs to be slightly graded to improve on the drainage. Light posts that, you know, that technically aren't within the approved plan that were added for the benefit of the development. And then just a minor markup on the as-built plan that we can, we as the department can get rectified. So, the DPW department has taken a look at it. They felt like it was substantially complete, and have offered these comments for you tonight. Tonight, I know the developer is here and can certainly speak to each of these items. And the request here is for the release of the final lot of that two-lot subdivision.
Excellent, thank you very much. So again, the board is in consideration of a Form M Certificate of Completion this evening. Just wanted to reiterate, I do concur that many of these items are minor and cosmetic in manner. And again, just to reiterate that the light posts were not part of the definitive subdivision plan. So, if we have the applicant here this evening, please come forward, state your name for the record, and if you could speak to this item, as well as the DPW memo that was released today. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is William Egan. I am the developer of subdivision 827. I'm here to request a Form M Certificate of Completion for that subdivision. The subdivision consists of two lots, Lot 2A and 3A, and both lots, 2A and 3A, have their frontage on Parker Lane, which is a private way. On April the 10th, the board approved a Form G release of Lot 3A from Covenant. Lot 2A remained under Covenant pending the conformance of plan and as-built items outlined in a memorandum dated April 7th from Matthew Warble to Jim Cooper. The plan items in that memorandum asked that additional loaming and seeding be added to the drainage swale, the infiltration basin, the area adjacent to Catch Basins 1 and 2, and an untreated area on Lot 2A. The as-built items had to do with a structure not included on the as-built, and the height of the berm surrounding Catch Basin 1. You have been provided with before and after pictures of the work that we have done to the drainage swale, the infiltration basin, Catch Basins 1 and 2, and Lot 2A. The as-built plan, which has been provided in your package, includes additional information, I'm sorry, provides, addresses the two items in Mr. Warble's memo of April the 7th, and it also provides some additional information that Mr. Warble requested when we did a site visit on April the 10th. Now, I was initially prepared to stop right there. However, when I got back to my office tonight, Jim was kind enough to send me, I got it about 5 o'clock, Jim sent me an email from Mr. Warble regarding a site visit that he and I did on July 18th. Now again, that's four days after our last Planning Board meeting. And I would like to spend a couple of minutes, with the chair's permission, to address those items briefly.
That'd be great, thank you.
I don't know if you've seen the memorandum or not, but as Jim pointed out, there are five bullet items. Three of them have to do with grass that hasn't grown yet. If you can see in the package we sent to you, we did a lot of work out there, re-loaming and re-seeding, and the grass just hasn't had time to grow. The grass will grow. The grass will grow out there. We spent over $1,000 watering it after we reseeded it. So three of those items have to do with, again, just wait for the grass to grow. One of the items has to do with the light posts, and I'm just gonna remind you what, if you don't mind.
Sure, pass it out, thank you. Just wait to speak until you're back at the mic, if you could.
In the right-hand corner of that picture, you'll see the conduit that Mr. Warble is referring to.
Yeah, okay.
Again, it wasn't something we had to do, it's something we'd like to do, it's something we've got the conduit in the ground now. We haven't put lampposts out there, because it's, we've got construction activities going on, there'll be houses built, and we just don't want to do that until that's the, really the final bow and ribbon, so to speak. But we weren't required to, but the conduit is in the ground, as he pointed out. He also pointed out the fact that, and I'm gonna read from this, "It appears that the trees identified to be retained in the definitive subdivision plan have been removed to the south of the gravel turnaround."
All right, thank you. Sure.
That was one I was gonna ask him about.
Okay, well, it must be the gravel turnaround there. Is the gravel turnaround where this machine is parked?
The machine is parked on the north side of the turnaround.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that turnaround, as you recall, was the fire turnaround. As you can see, the trees are there. I'm not sure if Mr. Warble doesn't realize there's also a seven-and-a-half-foot right away, in addition to the gravel. I'm sure he does, he's an engineer. But there's, that area was cleared as it was supposed to. We may have gone eight-and-a-half, maybe nine feet, we were, we were, with the fire department neighbor said, can we really safely turn that vehicle around? So we moved the trees, we moved the cutting back about a foot and a half past the right away. But if you can see, the trees are there, very much there. Finally, on one of the items that Mr. Warble, and I was a little surprised to see this, because I did address this with him too, he observed that an additional electric manhole was installed at the corner of Lot 3A and parcel 630. This electric manhole was not shown on the submitted as-built plan.
Great, thank you, appreciate these photos. Is this gentleman standing on the manhole?
That gentleman, like, I called, that's our electric installer. I said, Michael, what, I'm not gonna drop that, I said, what happened here? How did you put a manhole in there that wasn't supposed to be there? Well, we don't know where the manhole came from. You'll notice on the second page there, that we're holding up, this manhole showed up. Who dropped it there? We have absolutely no idea. But it's not part of the electric plan, I can assure you. So, it was there.
Yeah, it's just a cover that was sitting there.
It was just sitting, it was random.
It was put there to add some entertainment to tonight's meeting, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Appreciate that, yeah. Thank you for that.
So.
Photo evidence is excellent, so.
Yes, and it was kind of put together quickly, because I didn't get this until 5 o'clock, but.
Well, very much appreciate it.
In any event, I'm back now to requesting again that, tonight, that you formally approve the Form M Certificate of Compliance that we've requested here. Unless there's any questions from the board.
Absolutely. Well, first off, I appreciate you continuing with your explanation to touch on these items. Certainly, again, very minor items, the grass is just a, the nature of our seasonal Cape Cod existence here in the fall, I'm sure it's gonna come in very nicely, and that you'll make any adjustments needed for that. You know, the trees, you know, seem, it seems like a reasonable thing as well. So, let's see, we do not have a public hearing here, so we're going to go to board, questions, comments, concerns. Matt?
None, I'm satisfied, we're, we can issue the certificate.
Great, thank you, Matt. Michael?
No question, thanks.
Mary?
All set, thank you.
Ray?
Just, I wonder, wondered why he was, he was looking for trees in the wrong place, maybe, or?
I'm not sure. I don't know. Possibly, I, you know, he's been out there a couple times with me, and we've talked about it, but.
Seems like I saw trees there.
It was a night he actually had that item on his earlier memo back, the one on the 7th of April.
Yeah.
And we did talk about it, but, you know, maybe in his rush to get this thing over to you, we.
Forgot to delete it.
Forgot to delete it.
Well, and again, as Mr. Egan mentioned, you know, that the fire department was looking for as much room as possible for safe patches, so we could've maybe went a little bit further and took a couple more down, which I think is very reasonable. Tim?
No questions, I think everything seems to be in order.
Excellent, I appreciate that. I'd look for a motion to move this along.
I would make a motion to grant Certificate of Completion for subdivision 827 and release the final lot being held.
In a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Michael, all those in favor. Matt?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. Motion passes. Mr. Egan, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We have your pictures here, if you'd like to collect them, yes. And thank you for that again.
Suitable for framing.
Yes, nicely done, nicely done, thank you. Moving along on this evening's agenda, our next item is a regulatory agreement. Mary, would you mind reading this one?
This is a regulatory agreement number 2022-001 for 442 Main Street Hyannis, request for second minor modification. This is not a public hearing and does not need to be voted on to open or close the public hearing.
Excellent, thank you very much. Just some background here, the board is in receipt of a staff report dated, where's the date? Let's see, I don't know if there is a date on this, well.
It's a secret date.
Hmm. Staff report was received by the board recently, version one, in anticipation of this meeting. We also have a copy of the amendment to the regulatory agreement. And just a reminder on regulatory agreements, anytime a modification is requested, it comes to us to determine whether it's a major or a minor modification. If we determine it's a minor modification, I believe it simply goes to the town manager for approval. If it's major, then we do need to have a public hearing and talk it out. So, it's up to us to take a look at this and see if it's major or minor. We have the applicant with us here this evening, welcome, state your name for the record.
Hello, and good evening. My name is Patrick Nickerson, I'm an attorney in Centerville, representing the applicant, seeking a request for second minor modification of a regulatory agreement. Since there are a number of updated plans, and the, there is a lot of legalese associated with this request, I thought best to put together this short presentation and talk through the proposed changes. First, just to remind everyone, the locus is 442 Main Street, the north elevation, of course, faces North Street, the south elevation fronts on Main Street. Back in 2022, the regulatory agreement allowed the redevelopment of the former bank building, which had a drive-through into a Dunkin' Donuts building on the first floor with residential apartments on the second floor. The residential apartments contained five units. Here's a brief outline of the procedural history detailing how we got here. We did appear before you in September of 2024, seeking our first minor modification of the regulatory agreement, requesting a second dumpster to be added to the site plan, as well as an additional bedroom, but not changing the number of units on the second floor. Those proposed changes were found to be minor, and in the time that's passed, we've thought it necessary to request a couple additional changes, which we'll now talk through. I submit that at the end of the presentation, you'll find this, these proposed changes are actually an improvement upon the initial approved plans, and are also less intense than what was previously contemplated. So, I'm reminded of some of the illustrations where you'll provide to children in my daughter's coloring books about, can you try and spot the differences between these two pictures? And that theme will continue throughout the presentation. So, the first request, and I'm mirroring the presentation off the letter to Jim Cooper dated June 13th, which is in your materials, but we're seeking to add a platform and ramp to the west elevation, shown here in the highlighted portion here. The materials will be concrete and steel posts, it's going to improve accessibility and pedestrian safety, particularly those who have difficulty walking, or are unable to walk. You'll see the proposed location here in highlight, it's a little washed out, it wasn't so deep of a yellow color, so I apologize, but it's a, it's a ramp right to the west elevation. It's shown perhaps clearer here on the proposed site plan, which is again in your materials. Does not add to the intensity of use, it does, you know, go to the zero setback, so we are seeking relief for that setback. Under the current zoning in the DMS, side setbacks can be zero feet under Section 240 24.1.6, Table 3, zero minimum side setbacks are allowed, as of right. But again, since this regulatory agreement was signed in 2022, prior to the adoption of the DMS, it was the Hyannis Village Business District at the time, I thought best to seek the relief under the HVB, even though we don't need relief in the DMS. So.
I have to compliment you, being a denizen of Washington, DZ, you just spewed out an admirable collection of acronyms, excuse me, thank you, acronyms.
Thank you so much. Request number two relates only to the structure that is the clearance bar. We're seeking to add this structure to the drive-through lane, so that it will alert motor vehicles to the maximum height allowed to utilize the drive-through. Without this drive-through clearance bar, calamity possibly could await for the speaker board and for the canopy associated with the building. The proposed location of that is shown here on the site plan. Request number three is to add rooftop HVAC to the east elevation of the building, shown here. It's going to be screened from view with some white Trex decking and associated railings and posts. This change has been approved by the HHDC. Another acronym for you, Mr. Sexton. Some photos of the east elevation are shown here, that the HVAC really won't be visible from Main Street. Here is really the area in which it will be located. You will be able to see the screening from the rear parking lot, but otherwise won't be visible from Main Street.
Now, I have to just ask, was HVAC an afterthought? I mean, why is this, why was not this part of the original plan, you know? Oh, we need heating and cool, I like your bullet there, HVAC is necessary to provide heating and cooling to the apartment, well, yeah. I'm sorry, I just, I had to interject.
I believe there, it's an all-electric option being considered.
Okay.
That a previous iteration had utilized natural gas.
Yeah, so they needed some more space.
Correct.
Great, thank you, appreciate that. I feel better.
So, when we were back before you in September of 2024, as I mentioned, we requested and were allowed to add an additional bedroom on the second floor. At that time, we did not appreciate that adding the bedroom would change the second-floor stud layouts, which required alterations to the second-floor windows in terms of their size and location. This change was also approved by the HHDC. We are seeking to substitute the approved windows here at the top of your screen with the proposed windows here, circled in red, as in addition to that, we thought lowering the height of the DD sign and lowering the height of the gooseneck exterior lighting would be better for the second-floor residential tenants, and not have those lights sort of blaring into your windows. So, the proposal is to construct eight windows on the north elevation, again, this elevation faces the parking lot. In lieu of the six windows that were previously approved in the regulatory agreement, these eight windows, again, were approved by HHDC as part of a minor modification of its approvals, under the, under the theory that they're more residential in nature, that they allow more privacy, they're not so long, they're, they're a little shorter, and it's a comparable amount of fenestration when replacing six windows with eight on the second floor. The monument sign is a, is a story in and of itself. This is the approved monument sign that's referenced on the elevation plan in the regulatory agreement. As you can see, it is eight-and-a-half feet long, and it is four foot, eight inches high as measured from the top of the brick base. I mean, it's a enormous sign, exceeding 33 square feet. Unfortunately, Scrivener's error in the regulatory agreement limited the size of the sign to 14.27 square feet. The error was attributed to only measuring the physical text of the sign itself, not the entire background upon which the text is located. So, in other words, we cannot construct the approved sign, as you see it shown on the plan, because we're limited to 14.27 square feet in the agreement itself. At the same time, in the course of construction, the brick base was constructed at a height that's higher than what was approved. One foot, six inches for a brick base was approved in the regulatory agreement. It is about two feet taller than that. So what we've done is prepared for you a as-built brick base showing its relative height here, along with a 14.23 square foot monument sign. And we would seek your permission to construct this sign, leaving the brick base as it currently is constituted. We have a photograph on our next slide. On the condition that we receive HHDC approval for the monument sign with higher brick base, and on the condition that we provide three Annabelle hydrangeas and three blue princess hollies around the brick base to sort of break up some of the height of the monument base as it's been constructed. The alternative would be to seek an increase of 14.27 to 33 some odd square feet of sign area, but we felt that maybe such an increase might not be viewed as a minor modification, might not be something that is viewed as being less intense, not within the spirit of what was approved. So we thought we'd, we'd do the sort of lighter lift, if you will, in a modification sense, stick to our square footage, 14.23 versus 14.24. Keep the brick base as it is, not chop it down or break it up, and install some additional plantings around the base, so that some of the height is broken up with, with those plantings.
Just a quick question, if you don't mind.
Just regarding the plantings, aren't you concerned that they'll obscure the sign? Or are they gonna be dwarf plantings?
So, we've chosen these plantings because of their maximum height, as indicated from our landscape designer, should be okay. Height of the brick base looks like it's a little over 42 inches from grade. So we think what we're proposing, the hydrangeas and blue princess hollies would be appropriate, given the height of the base, and would be appropriate to help us, to help beautify it, because when you look at the relative size of the sign versus the relative size of the base without any plantings, it might, it might not be as aesthetically pleasing as, as one with the six plants around it. Here's a picture of the, of the base as it's presently constituted, with exterior lighting that's been approved already. Finally, again, we're back to the east elevation. Two DD signs were approved at these locations here, circled above the doors. We're proposing instead one 3.97 square foot Dunkin' sign. This is just a style choice from the applicant, since we're coming back anyway with all these other issues, we thought, can we reduce the number of signs by one, reduce the area a little bit? So that's the proposed change here. Dimensions are shown here. This sign facing Main Street gave us some trouble permitting, 3.1 square feet was approved in the regulatory agreement. However, the way the Town of Barnstable measures circular signs is rather unique, you don't just take the actual gross area, you, you can, you take the area around a sort of imaginary box. So, it would, it would suggest that circular signs are discouraged, because you're, you're utilizing area that doesn't really exist. So even though we're not changing any dimensional components of the sign itself, we do need an increase to four square feet to satisfy the town sign requirements.
The size of the imaginary box.
Mike, yeah.
The size of the imaginary box.
Yes.
Nicely done.
We're seeking to add a sign on top of the clearance bar, the powers that be have determined that this drive-through text does constitute a sign. So we're seeking to add this text here as a sign, which is 3.05 square feet. Given its height also, we're seeking permission to have relief from Section 240 71A regarding the maximum freestanding sign height. Since the allowable height is nine feet, the sign must be taller than that to get the attention of drivers, to let them know, if your, if your vehicle's taller than nine feet, please don't use this without damaging the equipment. We're reducing somewhat the height of the DD sign, as well as its size. This is a typo here, it should say 17.55, but that's, that's covered in the legalese. 17.58 was approved, it's actually gonna be 17.55, so we're seeing a slight reduction area. Yeah, there it is, 17.5. We're, we're close to wrapping up, so I appreciate your patience. This was another Scrivener's error in the regulatory agreement itself. The menu board size was approved at 24.16 square feet. 25.86 square feet are being requested. It's also internally illuminated, that's just the way the technology of these menu boards are headed. There's also intermittent movement. The menu board provides content updates approximately 12 times a year. You'll see that some menu boards are interactive, they'll move based on what you order, they'll total. This is not the proposal here, because we are in the DMS, we're seeking to have a sign that moves about 12 times a year regarding special offers or changes in menu items, whether it be summer versus winter, et cetera. And just to, for reference, this was always the intent, which, as it predates the reg agreement. So, the parties went to the HHDC in October of 2021. There's, there's John Kenny there. There's Jim Smith, the architect on the project, showing basically the proposal for the menu board, which has the nice canopy and the LED features. Its location is here, that's unchanged. Just details the functionality of the board. There's an on-off timer, it'll be on display only during business hours, light will be adjusted to reduce excessive glare, there's no live customer interaction. There's no live customer interaction. Couple samples are shown here. Some waivers are being requested for that because the board's internally illuminated and has some movement. We're seeking to only have three directional signs, so we're losing two of them. Five were approved. We only want three. That reduces the total number of signs and the total area. And I think that about covers it. So, you know, it may look like a lot, but when you break it down piece by piece, these are things that are all minor and are less intense than what otherwise was approved. There are two fewer signs and only a net increase of one one-hundredths of a square foot in area. So happy to answer any questions if you have them.
If you don't mind, just hit us real quick with the difference between a major and a minor modification. I think a major, we're looking for a threshold that affects public impact. Can you talk about what that threshold is?
Sure. So I view the threshold as being something that intensifies the use, that if there's something that's proposed that is more intense than what is allowed, it could be considered a major modification. What I submit, these are just a series of minor modifications, thinking to the ramp, the HVAC, couple of building tweaks, if you will, and then other tweaks related to signage. Some of them were related to clerical errors in the initial permitting process. As you see, the monument side is possibly as large as 33 and a half square feet because that is what was shown on the physical plan itself. But we're proposing it be 14 square feet. So there's no additional units. There's no additional square footage to the building. There are some additional waivers being sought, but only really because it's under the former zoning ordinance, not the current zoning ordinance. For example, with the ramp, zero foot is allowed under the DMS where it's not in the HVB. The drive-through clearance bar sort of is what it is. Something that's required and encouraged for industry standards regarding drive-through menu boards, something that was overlooked originally, but doesn't affect the intensity of use, I'd submit, because on the whole, we have two fewer signs at the end of the day.
Sure.
So they're really kind of building tweaks, nothing that intensifies the use and nothing that, in my opinion, should be considered major in the context of major versus minor modification.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. And just thinking back to the original regulatory agreement, I remember one thing of note is that this is basically taking the place of the Duncan located at the Speedway, the corner of North Street and High School Road extension. So that is now closed. So I just wanted to note that. Jim, staff, anything to add on this one?
Just that the applicant did do a good job of identifying kind of the threshold for the board. I will just add, you know, specifically in 168.5 of the code of the town of Barnstable, the minor amendment is one that does not alter the use, the intensity, or the mitigation stipulations of the regulatory agreement and does not include any other substantial amendment. So that's kind of the threshold you're looking at there.
Yeah, and I always think about the public. Is this something that is affecting the public in a major way? And if so, the public has a right to speak. Certainly, to me, this is all seeming very minor. Let's go to the board. Matt, questions, comments, concerns?
None, thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
None, thank you.
Mary?
I'm all set with a major-minor. The signage, is this going to... I'm just trying to think where it's actually going to... It's on the Main Street side, right? I'm just trying to remember. It's been a couple of years.
Yeah, yeah. Good question.
And it's in front of with a clock?
This is a little bank building across from the bowling alley.
It used to be a Rockland Trust.
They also have frontage on... Is it Winter Street? Yeah.
Winter Street, right?
So the signage is going to be on the south elevation facing Main Street. The east elevation, basically that alley where the HVAC will go, and then the north elevation facing the parking lot.
Okay.
There's really no changes to the approved signage on Main Street other than going from 3.14 to four square feet for this sign here. Also, I would just, you know, if you'd like, we can look at the draft second amendment with the legalese.
I don't know if we need to.
No, no. It was just a curiosity question.
Yeah, thank you, though.
I just couldn't remember from a couple of years ago.
No, it was a good question.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Ray?
Just actually, a question to the room. So how do you define intensity? That's all I have.
I'm going to let Jim take that. That's a good one.
Yeah, so that really is a question for the board itself in terms of how one would define intensity. Intensity typically in terms of how staff looks at it is, you know, impacts that are being created at the site and whether it is being intensified. So meaning if we were adding square footage, it would likely mean that adding square footage of usable space, that would likely mean more trips that could potentially be created. And so that would maybe have an intensity of use for traffic within the general area. If they're adding additional units to the second-story residential, I would say likely would potentially be adding an intensity of use. We typically don't talk about intensity of use when it looks to aesthetics. So, you know, just adjustment of signage perhaps.
So what you're really saying is like more people, more foot-track traffic, more automobiles or things that stand taller or stick out wider, things like that? Would that be fair?
Yeah, I would say that's fairly accurate. True practical impacts to the area, I would say, is a simple way of defining what increased intensity would be.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, great question. Thank you. Tim?
I'm all set. No questions.
Great. Yeah, my final comments are just that Duncan that was at the Speedway was terrible in terms of the layout, you know. I mean, it had room for three cars, and then it was blocking access to the gas station. This, I think...
You couldn't take a left out of the drive-through.
Exactly.
Well, I did anyway, but...
Tim.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I know, it was tough. It was tough. You know, this actually is, I think, an excellent design. You know, I think I counted between 12 and 13 cars that can sit in the queue. So I think this is a well-laid-out one. I remember that about this proposal. You know, for any corporate-style business like this, you hope that they don't ram their styling and their design down your throat, and they obviously, I think, were good partners through the process. I think that it, you know, kind of honors the look that we're going for here in town. So, you know, the monument sign, I have comfort knowing that that has to go to Historic, and they'll do their thing to give it a Saturn approval. And I think that that sign is as classy as you can get when you have a corporate-type brand like this. I just think the designer and architect did a good job. Two total less signs is great overall. So I think that it, you know, definitely seems minor to me.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just draw your attention, and I'll try and be very quick, but there were some tweaks to the draft reg agreement that I wanted to bring to your attention.
All right.
Regarding the redlined language here. So the menu board sign is 14.3 square feet, not 14.24. So that is one proposed change under requested signage on page one. If you follow along on your screen, you can see the redline proposed changes here. So this is one proposed change here from 14.24 to 14.23.
Keep it rolling.
Which reduces the total. Thank you. I'm also, I also thought best to reference those sign plans specifically so that what we've shown to you this evening are included in the reg agreement itself, just for clarity's sake, sort of cleaning up some of the legalese. So I've labeled the plans appropriately throughout.
Great.
With here regarding the monument sign, here regarding the condition to obtain approval of the Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District Commission, as well as those requests for relief I discussed regarding the... Well, these are just additional plan sets here. The monument post and panel sign plan, the clearance bar, single lane, eight-arm plan, the all-in-one canopy with digital menu board plan. Those are just included, just for reference, along with the request for relief for the freestanding height of the drive-through sign. I thought after submitting the initial draft that since it's technically being viewed as a sign, it might technically be in excess of the height requirements. So I thought best to include that request for relief. And I wanted to make sure I drew those changes to your attention before voting on them.
Excellent. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I know the board has had a chance to review that. You'll notice on the final page, there's a spot for the town manager to sign. So if we consider it minor, it allows the town manager to sign off on it and move it along. Any final questions before we look for a motion? Questions, comments, concerns? Looking good to go. Okay. Do we have a motion here?
I'll put forward a motion. This is a motion to find that the amendment proposed quality is minor amendment and may proceed to the town manager for consideration.
Excellent. Thank you, Ray. Appreciate that. Everyone in favor? Matt?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And myself, Debra Bishod, votes aye. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Great. Jim, going to talk about the housing production plan. So if you all remember, the housing production plan came to the planning board for consideration. The planning board reviewed the plan, discussed the plan at multiple meetings, and offered a unanimous positive recommendation to town council with some areas of emphasis. Town council ultimately decided to dig into it a little bit more, sent it back to Housing Committee, who looked at it, discussed it, and have made some tweaks. And Jim is going to talk about those tweaks and see if we would like to offer a second positive recommendation to town council based on the revised document. Is all of that true, Jim?
100% true. Great job. Thank you so much.
Do we need an intermission before you start?
Would you like?
Anybody need a recess?
I've been trying to get a fog machine for my introduction. One day.
We're good.
All right, take it away.
All right. It's a good evening. Thank you for having me back. Jim Cutford, Director of Planning and Development. Again, here to present the draft housing production plan for your consideration and recommendation. As the chairman mentioned, last we left the planning board, we proceeded to town council for their consideration. Town council recommended further public outreach. We did do that. We had additional meetings at different villages, talking with different boards and committees, and ultimately, and also left it out for public consumption and comments over the course of a month's time. We received all the public comment. We distilled those public comments, and we offered a redlined version of the draft housing production plan based on those comments. I will say, in a nutshell, we've reduced the housing production plan quite substantially. So the previous iteration of the housing production plan was kind of a, as I would describe it, a holistic look at housing and how the town of Barnstable will tackle comprehensively the topic of housing. And what we have done is kind of separated out the concept of general discussion of housing versus affordable housing. And the general discussion of housing, how are we going to tackle the big picture of housing, finds home in the local comprehensive plan. And that, as you guys know, has been a long process that the planning board recommended and is before town council now for their consideration. And we've really laser-focused this housing production plan to affordable housing, capital A, affordable housing, and how we're going to tackle that topic specifically. And so what we've done through the housing production plan, we updated data, we updated the goals and strategies by removing many of the goals and strategies that talked about big-picture housing and left the ones that were more focused on specifically affordable housing. And we updated some of the metrics as well in the housing production plan. So you'll have the housing production plan on Laserfish. It's been online for quite some time. I do have a presentation that I will do quickly because I know you guys have had a lot of investment in this project and this plan, so I won't take up too much of your time. But I think it is important to review one more time for the public itself, as well as the board, you know, really what the plan is and the different parts of the plan and how we... What are, what the ultimate goals and strategies that we are putting forward for this plan. So ultimately, what is the housing production plan? The housing production plan is a proactive strategy for planning and developing affordable housing. So this is straight from the state's website and definition. The HPP identifies housing needs of a community and goals and strategies it will use to identify and achieve or maintain the 10% threshold mandated under Master General Law 40B. And this is really where this whole plan comes from. So in 1969, the state said every town has to get 10% affordable housing. And then they realized, we got to figure out how we're going to make sure that every town gets to 10% affordable housing. So they mandated in their regulations in 1969 that every town is meant to have a plan in place to achieve 10% affordable housing. So capital A, affordable housing. They have a subsidized housing inventory, a physical inventory of every community and how many are deed-restricted, affordable, that find itself on the subsidized housing inventory. And they monitor to manage how many communities have found themselves at 10%. Spoiler alert, not many. But we are on our way. We are well over 7% at this time. And we do have, as you'll see in the plan, a plan in place to try and achieve our 10%. So again, this is state-prescribed. So a little bit different again from like a local comprehensive plan. This is very much state-prescribed, required elements, required parts of this plan. So a comprehensive needs assessment is the first element. That's really the data behind the plan. We then identify goals and strategies. So we've looked at our data, we've talked to the public, and now we've identified kind of the goals and strategies to achieve that 10% affordable housing. And then our action plan, just very similar to a lot of our planning initiatives. We look at the data, we talk to the people, we identify the goals, and we try and create an action to achieve those goals. So once we have this plan in place, we bring it forward to what's now called the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development. You guys are probably more familiar with DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development. They are now EOHLC. Right, more acronyms for you. And really what it is, is they're looking for an approved plan locally that identifies goals that's going to get you to your 10%. You know, the reviewers are paying close attention to the data, the goals, making sure that we're kind of checking the boxes of everything in the regulations at the state level. So as I mentioned, this has been kind of several iterations. You guys played a big role last year in the update. And so through that, we've had from 2022 to now, nine focus groups, two community workshops, two public meetings, online survey, and a 30-day public comment period, not to mention the public meetings with Housing Committee, Planning Board, and Town Council. Through that, analyzing the data, updating the plan, we've structured the plan again as prescribed in the state regulations with an introduction, housing goals and strategies, demographic profile, kind of understanding our community, our housing conditions, existing conditions, development constraints. And we have a lot of constraints in town, I would say. Well, I know that our Conservation Commission is the busiest conservation commission in all the Commonwealth. That's one constraint right off the bat. There's a lot of environmentally sensitive areas, you know, that do limit our availability for development and implementation capacity and resources. So the goals. So these are all going to sound very familiar to you because all of these, I believe, were in the very, the last year's plan. Again, what we did through our public input is reduce a number of goals and strategies to keep it focused more on the affordability aspect. So the first one, 10% of year-round housing units on the subsidized housing inventory. That 10% could be higher, but this is that mandated 1969 law that said every community needs to make, seek to achieve 10%. So that's typically goal number one in every housing production plan you'll see. Next, we start getting a little bit more creative in terms of what does Barnstable truly need. So we begin to talk about assist and stabilize housing, housing assistance programs for the most vulnerable residents. We talk about enhanced local capacity to implement deed-restricted, affordable housing initiatives and strengthen working partnerships locally and regionally, partner to promote greater public awareness and understanding of housing needs, continue research, outreach, and public education. So those are the big pick, the big buckets, and we talk about, and then we focus into different strategies. So one way in which we recommend looking at trying to get more... So one way in which we recommend looking at trying to get more year-round housing is pursue, pursue the extension of Barnstable's residential property tax exemption to Barnstable property owners to provide affordable year-round rentals to income-eligible tenants. One, one way we are already thinking about that is we've recently allowed for, through the state, allowed for accessory dwelling units on all properties, right? But meanwhile, we have this accessory affordable apartment program, which is essentially adding an ADU on, onsite, but it had very strict affordability criteria. So we're thinking of ways in which we could incentivize perhaps that, that program a little bit further. So taking some tools that we already have and making them stronger for, for our community. Amen zoning to incentivize development and redevelopment of existing parcels to create affordable assisted or independent living units for low-income seniors such as expedited permings, zoning relief, density bonuses. And we talk about potentially establish in lieu of fee comparable to housing market for those affordables. Revised Inclusionary Affordable Housing Ordinance by making it a zoning ordinance. I know this board has talked a lot about that when we were discussing dockside, requiring higher percentage of affordable units at variety of income levels. Talking about potentially doing that economic analysis to understand what that rate sizing of affordability is. Consider regulations and other policies focused on short-term rentals to extent they impact our year-round affordable housing market. Pursue the creation of affordable year-round housing on vacant or underutilized land, both, you know, private through potentially regulation relief, or on public land like the ongoing discussion with the Marston's Middle School. Plan and partner with entities produce permanent supportive housing for unhoused people. That's always something we're discussing and trying to partner with community stakeholders to try and support that. I believe we're actually gonna have someone here soon that, that does that. And, you know, further partnering with those entities are certainly top of mind. Other local initiatives and strategies, seek opportunities to increase number of affordable units in future privately developed projects. So just create incentive programs to further increase the number of affordability and using tools such as our Affordable Housing Trust to do so. Explore community-supported opportunities at affordable housing, as I mentioned, the Marston's Middle School, among others. The adult community center was another topic of discussion. And perhaps, I know we're talking with our asset management team about mapping all the town-owned land and see what, what are developable lots. While the town does own a number of lots, not many of them are developable. So we need to take a further look at that. Strengthen coordinate funding, integration of available rental assistance, foreclosure prevention, and housing stabilization programs, providing that network and, and trying to provide better tools for, for those individuals. Seek to establish a housing rehab program to help low-income homeowners preserve existing housing. So we do have an aging housing stock and how we can, how can we keep individuals in their homes. And this is a potential program that has, has been successful elsewhere. Continue to seek ways to defray cost-related pre-development, either through utilizing, again, our, our housing trust perhaps, or examining connection fee costs, you know, different ways in which we can be creative. Because a lot of folks that are looking to, you know, maybe redevelop, just need that little assistance upfront to get it going. Capacity is always, you know, always something of a discussion. Continue to promote and educate public on housing initiatives such as our LIP guidelines. So we do, we have a local initiative program guidelines that, you know, target individuals to come in and potentially have a friendly 40B option. Obviously, we have our new ADU ordinance, and we are creating a handbook and, and tool for, for individuals who wanna pursue that. And then also, you know, trying to make our Affordable Housing Trust more effective for, for all entities that are looking to redevelop. Partner with neighboring communities. One thing that I've always, I've been harping on for quite some time is creating that Regional Housing Services Office. And I know the county has put out their request for proposals to get, have a consultant formally establish that. So we're kind of at the doorstep now to see if this can truly come to fruition. So that's, that'll be exciting to see if we can get that off the ground and, and really implement it to meet Barnstable's needs. Clarify roles and responsibilities of the Housing Trust, boards and committees, staff, engage trust on housing development early in the permitting stage for potential funding support. And that's something that we've already been mindful of and certainly working with staff to, to get that going early. Build partnerships with local organizations to target populations such as low-income residents, seniors, BIPOC communities. Recruit, develop, and sustain dedicated, experienced town staff to continue coordination of towns' affordable housing efforts and entities. Support the Barnstable's Housing Trust by continuing to provide funding through different mechanisms. Right now, it's predominantly the Community Preservation Act or through CPC. There are other opportunities potentially with CBG. And by seeking state authorization for potentially real estate transfer fee and building permit surcharge. So the action plan, so basically, you'll find in your, in the housing production plan what we've added, well, what we had previously was a matrix of all of our goals and strategies and kind of identifying when we could achieve those potentially in the five-year timeframe. And we've added, through public input, actually, we've added some numerical figures to that. So just kind of strategizing what practically speaking, we could see come to fruition if, if these goals and strategies were implemented. You know, essentially trying to be realistic about it and, and, but also showing to the state that, you know, these are true percentages that could make us closer to that 10%. And we identify stakeholders like the Housing Committee or Planning Board or Town Council that would play a critical role in that. And these are just kind of blown up a little bit more. Sorry, I should have, everyone's squinting there. I should have done that previously.
Jim, are the numbers in there, are those the units created?
Right, those are just estimate unit created potentially if these were to, these, all these goals were to, and strategies were to come online. So a lot of it would come through our Revised Inclusionary Ordinance. I mean, that's, that's one of the bigger ones. If you want to add additional percentage of affordable, I mean, it would have to be in partner with things we've already talked about, like maybe density bonuses or something to that effect. But that would be one of the larger ones. So next steps, once the planning board has had an opportunity to review and offer a recommendation, it would go to Town Council, where staff would present that housing production plan to the council for approval. If the council moves that forward, it would be, it would be given to the town manager to provide to EOHLC, which essentially means the state would review for compliance with, with, again, Master General Law 40B and their regulations. And if approved, we would have an approval for five years. You could also have it certified if the approved plan, as well as meeting your 10% goal. So unlikely for this five-years section, but perhaps in the, in the near future. Where you can find all of this is under our Housing tab, right on the town's website. We have a Housing Production Plan Update tab there, and it'll bring you right to the, to the document. So with that, happy to answer any questions, take any comments.
Well done, Jim. That was a great presentation. It's good to go through it again, just to remind us about, you know, what we're talking about here. I like seeing where these things originate from and all the, you know, all the different aspects to it. So earlier today, Karen emailed the board with the letter that the planning board sent in support of the housing production plan. It's dated December 6th, 2024. Again, we had a unanimous vote here at Planning Board. We highlighted six areas of focus. We basically chose six of the strategies that we felt Town Council should start with. I don't know if you remember, we had a really good, robust conversation going back and forth, talking about what we felt was the right place to start. So my first question for you, Jim, of those six specific strategies that we highlighted, have any of those been trimmed from the plan?
Yes, so we could go glass half full or glass, glass half empty, but yes, some have been trimmed and some have been saved. So of the six, I would identify one, four, and, sorry, one second. One, four, one, oh, I'm sorry, one and four have been preserved. And two, three, five, and six, while not in the housing production plan, do find themselves in the local comprehensive plan. So all have been preserved in one form. But as I mentioned in the beginning, really, the public feedback and guidance received since the time of the planning board discussion was to trim for the, the two discussions, the discussion of affordability to be, to be housed in the housing production plan, and big picture affordable housing, such as, you know, village-scale development or, you know, alignment with our comprehensive wastewater management.
Excuse me, Jim, but we don't have the six in front of us, so, you know, you're doing like one and, one and four?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had the letter.
Well, let me, let me read.
He's got it.
Yeah, just on my phone, yeah. Why don't I read one and four, so we can review what is still in there? Number one is to pursue the extension of Barnstable's residential property tax exemption to property owners that provide year-round rentals to income-eligible tenants. So obviously, we have that residential exemption for year-round residents right now, which is a great feature in the town. And the recommendation was to expand that to encourage more year-round rentals to income-eligible for people who maybe are doing seasonal type, type rentals. So we, we thought that was a good idea. Number four, consider regulations and other policies focused on short-term rentals to the extent they impact year-round affordable housing, such as Nantucket's initiative to ban corporate ownership of short-term rentals. We all agreed very strongly that that was an area to start with. Jim, this is kind of hard to read on my phone. Do you want to read two, three, five, six, and just let us know what has been eliminated?
Yep, absolutely. All right, and I apologize for that. So two and three, so two and three are kind of in line with each other. So two is support village-scale mixed-use, multi-unit development and redevelopment consistent with the local comprehensive plan by implementing community-supported planning initiatives and zoning amendments, and studying what design, scale, and type of housing may be appropriate in other commercial corridors, pedestrian-oriented village centers. That's two. Number three is identify zoning amendments and other strategies to support the missing middle and living little forms of housing, such as allowing single-family home conversions, duplexes, cottage clusters, townhomes, tiny homes, infill design consistent as identified suitable in the local comprehensive plan. Five and six are closely coordinating implementation of the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan and housing plan to address both natural resource protection, housing needs, and continue to support upgrades to wastewater infrastructure in the downtown highness growth incentive zone. And lastly, explore public-private partnerships with the town's largest employers and opportunities internally with Barnstable's public schools to create workforce and seasonal housing for employees and students.
Excellent. I appreciate that.
So those are the ones that got the X?
Those are the ones that got the X. So let, let me just share with the board kind of mentally where I'm at, and then we can go around the horn here and express our thoughts. Essentially, you know, kind of wa, watching from the background, you know, what I think this is, is an attempt by Town Council to simply find a compromise to get something moved forward. You know, the council's a little bit more political than we are, and they have their disagreements and comments and feedback. And I think that councilors were wise to say, let's try to create a document that we're all going to support so that we have something rather than nothing. And I think that's the mentality that I have. Certainly, I don't think anything needed to be trimmed from this. I thought it was a great document. I think everyone involved did a phenomenal job with it. A ton of hard work went into it. It bums me out that this stuff was removed. I think the, the four items that Jim just read are phenomenal, and I wish they were in there. What I will say is, all of that work doesn't go away. It just goes on the shelf. And it certainly can be dug up later on to be used in the future. But I don't want to be an individual that is stubborn and digs in and says, I want those back in because I fear that that's moving away from compromise and moving away from getting something done. So I certainly would like to see something rather than nothing, because there is still a lot in the revised, trimmed plan that's very good. And again, the, I think that this stems from Town Council's desire to focus more on affordable housing than market-rate housing. So I think we, as a board, have expressed that we feel in the town, we need both. There's a demand, high demand for all housing. But again, I don't disagree that a focus on affordable housing is, is a great way to go. So, so I think it's a good start. That's my thoughts. So, you know, if, if all agree, one path we have before us is to simply move to recommend adoption of the 2025 housing production plan with numbers one and four from our memo of December 6th, 2024. So that, that is an option we have before us. I mean, I think it's probably the simplest option. So I'm just gonna go around the horn. We can see how everyone feels. Matt, your thoughts, comments?
In the effort to move this forward, I would say, I would agree with you. We'll just, we would recommend adoption. I do like the concept of, of what you talked about. I mean, those other concepts are really important, right? The wastewater infrastructure, right? And I'm just gonna come out and say this very clearly, you know, Barnstable has borne an unfair burden in terms of addressing the housing needs of Cape Cod. Okay, we were first out with a, with a wastewater treatment system. I've set it for 25 years. It's wastewater, 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 wastewater. That's the problem, that's the problem. And many of the other towns that have adopted wastewater treatment facilities or are now putting sewers in, they are capping flow rates. Right? So they go, well, we're gonna do it, but, you know, if you get two bedrooms, you'll get two bedrooms. Right? Cheap way out. So it's really disappointing that that is not the number-one problem that we are addressing across the town. I understand the environmental need, I get it, the Bayesian history is really important, super important, right? What, what about the rest of town? What about the lots that you can't build on because they're in a zone two, perfectly good 19,998 square foot lot, you can put one bedroom on. Perfectly good neighborhood. Prior to 1970, 85, 95, you could have built a five-bedroom house on that property. There's many of them in the town. It is the number-one problem. So it's a little disappointing, but I, you know, I'm happy to fight that on a different battlefield.
Right. Yeah, well said. And that's definitely number one for me in terms of what got removed. So thank you, Matt, for that. Michael?
Yeah, no, I agree. I think, I agree with what you said and also what Matt had said. I think, you know, a lot of hard work has put into this. And last time I remember, we did talk about this, and I do agree that, I don't want to be repetitive, but I think we should just, you know, recommend adoption to the Town Council.
And Mike, do you feel we do that with number one and four highlighted from prior?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, all right, appreciate that. Mary?
Thanks. Just for clarification, number two, three, five, and six are not completely lost. They're in the long-term plan, right? Comprehensive long-term plan?
Correct. I will say.
Addressed in it.
Yeah, addressed in some way, maybe not the, exactly as.
The detail that we're looking for. Okay. Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mary. Ray?
So first of all, Matt, I think you hit it right on the head. I think it's incredibly short-sighted to cover, I was gonna say, put your head in the sand, but there's probably crap in it. So, Mr. Chairman, I must say, I know you, you wanna, you wanna pick your battles.
Yeah.
And you wanna pick your battlefields. However, I, I do think it would not be unreasonable to say something like, we endorse this plan with, with the notation that, that number five of our letter is absolutely critical. And it's, again, are you gonna pay for it now? Are you gonna pay for it in the future? Or your kids are gonna pay for it? And, and the fact is, it's come to bite us, and it's, as, as you said, Matt, it's absolutely critical. It's absolutely critical. And, and we will literally end up sinking in our own excrement if we don't, if it's not addressed. And it hasn't been addressed, and it looks like the can's getting kicked down the road. So.
Yeah.
I, it's great to hark back to the good old days when you could drive down the road and throw something out the window, and nobody would notice. But those days are done. And so maybe we, we could have some sort of notation that go with, except the one, actually.
so maybe we, we could have some sort of notation that go with, except the, one, actually, it wouldn't be half-full, it'd be a third-full. And with the notation that council should really reconsider the stance on, on, on water, water treatment and on all its forms.
Yeah, Jim, just a, to piggyback on that, certainly a motion could include that the Planning Board strongly recommends the reinclusion of the strategy to closely coordinate implementation of the town's CWMP.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, town, you know, that's not going to affect the impact of our endorsement of the plan.
No.
Okay. Okay. So thank you for that, Ray. That's a good idea.
If that's true, can we put them all back in?
We could.
Right?
We're picking, we're picking.
I know. I'm just saying that.
We certainly could use the language of, you know, we, you know, endorse the Housing Production Plan as drafted. We encourage Town Council to prioritize number one and four, and we recommend to Town Council that those items are added back.
I like that.
I don't think that's a bad idea.
I mean, you think about it, it's like, yeah, the wastewater.
It's a recommendation, you know?
Yeah, wastewater is a huge issue. It's an absolutely huge issue. But the village-scale mixed-use is equally as important.
Absolutely.
You know, all, we didn't, none of these, I mean, they weren't in order of priority to us. They were, it was just, here's the six issues.
All priorities.
If, I don't know why we can't go back and say that.
Yeah. No, I, I think that, I'll make the motion when the time comes. And, you know, again, prioritize number one and four and recommend adding back two, three, five, six. Strongly recommend. Thank you. Yes.
And I think.
Tim, go ahead.
Our recommendations are, I mean, this is not binding. It's not like they, you know, I mean, this is a, a letter and an endorsement of the Housing Reduction Plan. The Town Council can do with it what we want, but.
Certainly can.
If we have these opinions of this board, which I think we all share them and we've discussed it, you know, I think we can send the Town Council with, you know, no, we still strongly have these recommendations and these thoughts.
Right.
But then they get the endorsement, and then, you know, the plan can be filed within the state guidelines. Because isn't it, does it need to be filed and endorsed this year? Are you, aren't we up against it?
No, no, we've actually passed the expiration date, so.
Oh, yeah.
We're due.
We were up against it, now we just blew by it.
Just throw it all out. Just throw it out, right? You don't keep the old man age. You toss it.
Tim, anything else to add? Yeah. An important question, indeed.
Yeah, Tim, we're already over the cliff.
Yeah. No, I agree. You know, wastewater, I think, is, you know, if you had to prioritize, one of the, you know, most important on that. But, you know, I agree with the members of the board that they're all important. And, you know, I think we should maybe still make that opinion known.
Thank you for that. Excellent. So, Jim, our letter is, is obviously a part of the permanent record. So am I able to make a motion by simply referencing the number on, the priority number from that letter rather than reading the whole thing?
Yeah, that's fine for this.
Appropriate?
This evening. And then we'll draft it and have you review it to make sure it meets the intent of your, your motion.
Okay. Excellent. Any more questions, comments, concern before I make motion? Okay, thank you. So I move to recommend adoption of the 2025 Housing Production Plan to Town Council as currently written, recommending prioritization of numbers one and four from the Planning Board's letter dated December 6th, 2024. The Planning Board also strongly recommends from that letter, numbers, priorities number two, three, five, and six are added to the Housing Production Plan as we all unanimously deem them to be of high importance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do you, Mike?
Second.
There it is. Thank you, Ray. All those in favor? Matt?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much.
So we'll get that letter drafted, and we can send it out to the board, and then we will get it signed and get it off to Town Council.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, it is time for our annual election of officers. We're seeking nominations for Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk. We're going to start. Would anybody like to nominate somebody for Chair?
I would make a motion to nominate Stephen Robichaud for Chair.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate that. All those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. It is unanimous. We have a Chair and a Vice Chair, and now for a Clerk. Do we have a nomination for Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Matt Teague for Clerk.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Michael. All those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Oh.
Aye.
Oh, there it is.
She did a double.
Little delay there. Uh-oh.
She did a double pump.
Uh-oh. Some drama.
Woo!
Ray?
Left-handed.
All right, Tim?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. That is unanimous as well. Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. General Correspondence, we've got a letter from Jennifer Ratliff, received June 26th, 2025. Okay, everyone hopefully has had a chance to read that. Jim, some staff updates for us?
Yeah, just real quick, at the last, or two weeks Town Council, two weeks ago's Town Council, they had on the agenda for the downtown Hyannis zoning changes. Unfortunately, the meeting went past 11:00 and they did not continue the matters. So all of those items that I reported on, I think, at the last Planning Board meeting have been pushed to the August 20, August 21st, that, the last week of August Town Council meetings, only one of August, to open up for a first read, which then ultimately come to the Planning Board. We would have to put that in as a legal ad if they were to do the first read to recommend to Planning Board, which likely means towards the end of September, maybe early October for the, the Planning Board to consider those. Also, on an upcoming agenda will be your review of updated Unified Design Guidelines.
Oh, my goodness. Wow, we missed that.
Fan favorite in these parts.
Hyannis Historic District Commission has updated.
I know, right?
Updated their public art, and they would like for your consideration of that. So we'll have that on an updated agenda for you. And that's all for this evening. Oh, and Kyle has a few.
Kyle?
Real quick, we just released a survey for, we're doing, updating the town's open space and recreation plan.
Oh, yes.
So we just released a survey to the public on that. We're going to have a public meeting on August 28th in this room, if anybody's interested.
Great. Looking forward to that. And I did see that email come through. I'm going to do that survey. Everyone else should. And CPC voted to fund that consultant that's going to run that. So we're excited about that. I do plan to hopefully get a CPC PowerPoint going for the board in September. There's been a lot of good things that we've been talking about there. There's a lot of projects from DPW that I'd like to share. They seem to bring them all at once, so it's a big ask and makes us a little nervous, but it's all good stuff. So I'll do a presentation on CPC in September to let you know what's going on. And there was one other thing I wanted to ask you about. An email came out from Kate today on Open Streets. Is it Open Streets? Great Streets?
Great Streets.
Sorry? Okay.
Yeah, Great Streets.
Can you tell us about that?
Absolutely. So we've been working diligently to complete the Great Streets project. You might be, you are certainly familiar with it. The title might not be resonating with you, but that's the two-way Main Street, two-way South Street alignment, adding ADA-compliant curb ramps and, and parking, as well as a number of other exciting improvements to downtown Hyannis. We've been working through the nuances and then with the engineers for the last year or so. And we've now finally got to our 75% design. So this is kind of the last crack at taking a look at it and seeing if there's anything we need to tweak before we get to that 100% and, and hit the, hit go and, and really start working on it. So we'll, the, the schedule as of right now is that we'll have that public meeting for the 75% on September, nope, August 27th, so the day before the open space. So you can get a good fill of planning and development if you're excited that week. And then that will be in the evening, right here at the public hearing room, 6 o'clock, I believe it is. We'll, we'll be pushing out the flyers. I know Kate pushed it out to the, to the group today. But we'll be doing a robust outreach to, to the greater Barnstable area. And then after the, the public meeting, we'll relook based on public comments, see if there's any tweaks, so we can get to 100% design and hopefully put out a request for proposals for, for construction. That request for proposal will probably go out this winter, hopefully, if all goes well. And we'll have maybe some mobilizing in the spring, but, you know, it's, it's apparent that we do not impact our summer season here. So the great majority of the work will be done in the fall season of next year and into the spring, so that it's ready to go for the next summer season, so the 2027 summer season. Much of it is lines and, lines and signs, as I like to say, just restriping to make it two-way, put, tossing up stop signs where they need four-way stops. But there is a couple of, you know, there's a, there's one sizable improvement, and that's our six-point intersection that will be more of a roundabout feature, which hopefully will be a really nice, you know, monument feature as you're entering the harbor. There will also be some curb movement up where South Street and Main Street come together to realign that to make it work for two ways. And, and maybe some slight other improvements if we're successful with grants. So we're constantly looking at ways we can improve the project. Multimodal paths are kind of a top priority for myself and, and some others in terms of how we can move people in downtown Hyannis. And so not just looking at how we're moving, going from one way to two-way in cars, but for all modes of transportation and how you get around. You know, we've seen it very successful on South Street, or C Street, excuse me. And Beers's Way is almost complete with their multimodal path. Would love to get additional ones here in downtown Hyannis. So we're constantly looking at ways to improve that Great Streets project.
That's awesome. Yeah, we're looking forward to see that design. And certainly, if there's materials that can be shared with the board around when that's done, we always love looking at that stuff. What is the work that's been going on at Main Street, Center Street, and Old County, Old Colony side?
Old Colony, yes. So that, a lot of people thought that was Great Streets, but it actually, originally, we were hoping to align it with that project. That's actually a grant that, that we received for, called the bottleneck grant. So it, it does some slight improvements to intersections. We actually did, did that intersection as well as the intersection over near the hospital. And so.
Oh, yeah.
Just some slight curb movement, improvements of the light fixtures, ped lights now at the intersection, shorter crosswalks because we moved the curb lines a little bit closer. A lot of great work over at the Town Engineering Office to get that one done.
That's awesome. Excellent.
Where was that one?
Sorry, go ahead. It's like the entrance to the downtown Main Street area by the train depot.
East End.
East End.
Oh.
Right by the old train station.
Cape Cod RTA.
Yeah.
Cape Cod RTA, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Bradford's is right there.
Still is a train station.
Yes, of course. Yeah, that's true. Yeah.
So I, just, Jim, is there?
Copper bellies.
Is there any?
Tim was like, oh, yeah, of course.
Now I remember.
Yes. Balance, that's right.
Now he knows. Mary knows the right reference to use. Sorry. Ray, go ahead.
Jim, is there, is there federal money involved in this? And will there be?
Not at this time. There was potential for some federal dollars, but we are closely looking at the terms and conditions of grants coming down from the federal government. And so at this time, there is not.
Okay. Do we, so this would be self-sustained without?
Right. So we do have several grants from the state that have already been procured, as well as Chapter 90 funds and some other local funds. Yep.
Thanks, Jim.
Any other questions, comments, concerns for staff? Excellent. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes from June 9th, 2025? Okay, could we have a motion to approve?
I believe we approve the minutes of June 9th, 2025.
Thank you, Matt. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. All those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye, meaning the minutes are approved. Future meetings, August 11th, 2025, and August 25th, 2025. Anything before we adjourn? I move that we adjourn this evening. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Michael. All those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.